This is the Tuesday, April 8th, 2014 council meeting. All my council members are present. A large amount of the population is present like that. The first thing on the agenda tonight is the prayer. And I'd like to ask the chairman to lead us in prayer. And then the quads attend if you please.
Let's pray. Let me follow what we did at this meeting. And just thank you for the privilege to make it to live in this town. And ask your special blessings on the liberations that happened this evening. And those that you've blessed with your power and your grace. In your holy blessing and your great... Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pat Corinier, are we complying to the Freedom of Information Act? Thank you. I have an offer for approval of the agenda. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All must in favor. Aye. And the ayes have it. We have a public hearing tonight. And then awards and presentations will regard with a public hearing to receive input on the millage fee changes that will become effective on July 1st, 2014. It's very nice to see you here tonight.
Changes to become effective July 1st, 2014. We have a millage rate proposed adjustment for three mills. And a variety of small planning and building fee adjustments. So it all becomes effective on first of July.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moore, we have a one minute.
I'm shooting for Comcast. I'm shooting for Comcast.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this issue? Is hearing done? This is probably very exclusive.
Ma'am, I would like to speak. My name is Urban Evans. I live at 2144 Sherwood Circle, Mount Pleasant.
Then you have two minutes. If you'd like.
I apologize for my lateness, but I just got off work and the first traffic's heavy. My name is Urban Evans, 2144 Sherwood Circle. I'm speaking as a private citizen and also as a member of the Republican Party. I represent on a committee on Mount Pleasant 33. Only government can arbitrarily increase its cost to the public without any commensurate demonstration of increase of value to the public. I'm concerned about the millage increases, but more specifically the proposed increases in planning and building fees. The fees appear to be quite arbitrary, as they are across the board, increasing 100%. If the town is truly an advocate of the private sector and seeks private sector growth and employment, then the town should not speak with a forked tongue. We need to look at our fees and then look at what the impact of those fees are on small business people and properly evaluate them. I would like to recommend to the town that they postpone the proposed tax increases and instead right now go into a period of zero-based budgeting, which was first advocated by President Carter. Go through that process, publish it in the military news, and then allow the public further research based on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Evans. I appreciate your comments. Anyone else speak on this? Again, that public hearing is closed. We have another public hearing tonight. And this is to get input about parcels of land in Smithville subdivision.
Officially, the hearing is to receive input on a request by owners of approximately 2.92 acre tract of land, priced at three parcels. And to amend the town with a comprehensive plan of these land use plans, changing land use designation for this property's strong commercial to high density neighborhood. These parcels are identified by parcel TMS numbers 658000070, 071, and 072. These properties are located at Weaver Circle off of Highway 17 and above Hungry Neck Boulevard. You do have some quarters on ordinate considerations under planning and business related to this public hearing.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I understand we have speakers signed up on this issue.
Yes, Mayor. Lyra Richardson.
Ms. Richardson, of personal...
I'm Lyra Richardson, address is Pacific, Federal Johnson Lane. I'm speaking on the property. It's located in a small cluster of homeless private homes along Weaver Circle, which is a private right-of-way basically that's probably about 20 feet in some spot, 10 feet in other spot. And if this property is not going to have access to it from Humphreynak, Weaver Circle is not the appropriate roadway to get to this property. Also, Mr. Hale came through, the realtor, came through on Monday of last week to pass out the listing. In the listing, he shows the map of the area. And he's placed on Weaver Circle wherever he wants to place Weaver Circle or by some standards, the county had Weaver Circle coming through two private yards, which one is my mother Rosalind Snyder, which is 1767 Highway 17 North, and my brother's property also. As I stated in the last time, we actually went to court because we had an issue with that right-of-way. We went to court in 2009/10 to make sure that road was still open. If it was Humphreynak, we would have never had to go to court to prove that that was the right-of-way for lot 1767A and 1767B. So if he does not have access to this property from Humphreynak, there's no way he's going to be able to access this property through Weaver Circle to create a high-density residential area. Whatever they do with the property, that's their property. We have nothing to do with that. But for the lothead of the people that are living there, it's probably about eight families that lives there, whole state community, dirt road, there's no way it's going to be able to handle the traffic that was coming from that apartment complex to 17. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I agree.
Hi, I'm Anna Green. I'm one of the seller. My family and I don't look for the property that's named Weaver Circle. So that's why we are selling it. We're selling about three acres of Humphreynak. And we're not going to go through Weaver Circle. We're going to use Humphreynak as an access to get to the property. When my family and I decided to sell this property, we wanted something that is not going to disrupt the area, the community. We didn't want no gas station, no convenience store, no business that could come around all night, four hours. So we decided to have townhouses of home, rural property, family that can live in the area where my mother lived and my brother. They live on Weaver Circle. And we don't want anything that going to hinder our neighbors. Because I know, Snide, we're just in the oldies. Everybody on Weaver Circle. I grew up there in that area. So we don't want anything that will disrupt our neighbors. We just wanted to sell these three acres. We don't live there. We can tag sale and we can use it for anything else because I live in a new location. So that's why we wanted it to fall homes or townhouses, something like that. No gas station, no convenience store, no kind of business.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Chris Miller.
You can, if you prefer. Okay, thank you. He chose not to speak during the public hearing. He's going to wait until the House of Representatives is... That's all we have in public hearings. This public hearing is closed.
Rabbi Reveson. Come on up, Sarah Judy. And members of the member committee, would you please before and welcome? Fair Page, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I have a proclamation that I'll share with you right now. Whereas the Holocaust was a state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945. Jews were the primary victims, 6 million of whom were murdered. Gypsies, the handicapped, and Poles were also targeted for decimation for racial, ethnic, or national reasons. Millions more, including homosexuals, Jehovah's Witnesses, Soviet prisoners of war, and political dissidents, also suffered previous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments. And whereas we, the people of Mount Pleasant, should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. And whereas we, the people of Mount Pleasant, should actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom and a just society. And whereas the days of remembrance have been set aside for the people of Mount Pleasant to remember the victims of the Holocaust as well as to reflect on the need for respect of all peoples. And whereas pursuant to an act of Congress, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the days of remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust to be Sunday, April 27th through Sunday, March 4th, 2014, including the Day of Remembrance known as Yom Hashoah, Sunday, April 27th, 2014. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the town of Mount Pleasant, hereby proclaim that it is Sunday, April 27th through Sunday made forth as days of remembrance in memory of the victims of the Holocaust. And in honor of the survivors as well as the rescuers and liberators. And further proclaim that we, as citizens of Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, should promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. I encourage you to join the community in remembering the victims during the community program, Yom Hashoah, Sunday, April 27th at 3:00 PM at Kyle Cundo State Eaterly, 90 Nelson Street in Charleston.
Honorable Mayor Page, councilmen and women, denigrated civil servants, esteemed citizens of our beautiful town. We are here this evening to ensure that mankind will never lose the memory of that terrible moment in time. When the awful specter of the deaths camps stained the history of the world. When our great country, America, and its allies liberated those haunting places of terror. The world came to a vivid, yet tragic, understanding of the evil of those times during the Second World War. Each of those names, Auschwitz, Buchenwald, Dachau, Treblinka, Birkenbelsen, and so many others, became synonymous with horror. The millions of deaths, the gas chambers, the crematorium, and the thousands of people, including our very own Joe Engel and Deanie Atkins, who somehow survived, yet survived only with a lifetime of scars. They all came and became the consciousness and the conscience of history. Forever, we must remember just how precious civilization is, and how important is liberty, and how heroic is the human spirit. Like the genocide of the Armenians before it, the genocide of the Cambodians, Rwandans, Darfurians, and now the Syrians. And so many other people who have been persecuted, the lessons of the Holocaust may never be forgotten. As we light the memorial candles tonight, let us remember to never forget, to pay tribute to the freedom of spirit and justice which Americans have fought so hard and so well to preserve. Thank you.
I'm going to read the meditation, the prayer. If you have not already, light your candle now is a good time. My name is Phyllis Kaliski, Mayor. I'm the daughter of Deanie Atkins. And my sister Evelyn Delson and I are the chairs of the Remember program. And we do really invite each and every one of you to participate in our Yom Hashoah event that is this April 27th, which is a Sunday at 3 o'clock at KKB on Hazel Street. And it's very important to know that, yes, it's put on by a Jewish organization, but this is a community event because we are all members of this wonderful community. And I was born and raised here, East Cooper, actually. So I personally invite each of you to stand with me and march with me through the city of Charleston in silence as we remember those who were so not fortunate and had to live through such a horrible time in history. As I light this yellow candle, I vow never to forget the lives of the Jewish men, women, and children who are symbolized by this flame. They were tortured and brutalized by human beings who acted like beasts. Their lives were taken in cruelty. May we be inspired to learn more about the 6 million brothers and sisters as individuals and as communities to recall their memory throughout the year so that they will not suffer a double death. Also, but also the splendor of their lives. May the memory of their lives inspire us to hallow our own lives and to live meaningful lives that we may hope to ensure that part of who they were shall endure always. Thank you so very much.
Can we get the Wando Boys basketball? Obviously, I haven't had these guys kneel down. Do you feel like that too? I'd like to call a fellow Wando warrior. I'm a warrior. We have another warrior on council hall coming over unless...
Three, my goodness.
No, no, no. We're warriors strong. Your kid, okay? And a B.E. grow, that's okay here.
You guys all smiling? I gotta double down some of you guys. 2014 state, the stats for the 4A Wando Boys Basketball champion. 4A Wando Boys Basketball finished the season with a perfect 11-0 at home for the third time in their school's history. We get from the lower state title that station no other Wando basketball team has accomplished before. The Wando Warriors won a lower state game in fourth against Sumter for a spot in the state title game in March. The Wando Warriors defeated Hillcrest Rams 65-50 in the Class 4A Championship game at Columbia Light Breeding, Columbia, to capture the first boys' basketball state title in the school history. Wando Ford Jimenez Rogers, selected, being selected by coaches votes for inclusion of 2013-14 South Carolina Basketball Coaches Association All-State Team. Jimenez? Rogers, a 6'4" sophomore, native sophomore. Ford helped guide Wando to the Region 7 title and into the third round of the Class 4A playoff, averaging 6 points, 5 rebounds, and 4 assists per game. The Wando Warrior head coach is David Eaton. I'm honored to stand here on Mayor Page's 200 grand and to say, you guys, I mean, I know, London, when you were there, I was there, we had some good teams. We couldn't, we could never get to the lower state. But it's very fitting, 40 years after the first graduating class in 1974, well before my time, of course.
Not much before my time.
Yes, you guys, you guys did it. And I was there in Columbia. I know Mr. Nichols on council was there too. I'll tell you something, these guys are good.
One, two, three, big smile. One more, big smile, and one for the love.
Thank you, guys.
Young teen, y'all, young teen, young teen. Engineer Steve Gibbons, if you can come forward, please. Captain Allen, you can relax, stay in your office. Fair Page, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Very few people in the course of a lifetime have the opportunity to save someone's life. And Steve was able to do that on the night of March 11th. What happened was, we had a young man who unfortunately was trying to take his own life by jumping off a rappel and a bridge. And the nearest police officer, the first officer to respond, the city of Charleston officer, was pleading with the young man not to do so. And finally, the officer asked the young man, is there anyone I can get for you? Is there anyone that you would like to speak with? And the young man said, Steve Gibbons. And what happened was, the young man was a part of our fire department explorers program, which is a program we have for our U. And in that program, our young men, young women, they learn CPR training, they learn how to stage a fire event with light. So it's a wonderful program we have. It's been a successful program in 80 years. And Steve had such an impact on that individual that in his moment of need, he wanted Steve Gibbons. And so Steve happened to be working that night, responded right away, went up onto the bridge, and successfully talked the young man down. And so for his actions, for the impact he had on the life of that young man, for what he has done for this community, for that family, and for the way he has so well represented our organization, he was elected as employee of the month.
All, all great things for our community. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the March 11th, 2014 council meeting and the March 2014 financial statements. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. And the ayes have it. Next, we have correspondence and public statements. And before we take public statements from the audience, I have a council member who has an announcement.
Briefly, thank you very much. Just briefly, and just a moment to recognize Robert Collins Jr., Robby, Madam Mayor, Council. I served with Robby on Boza several years ago and learned, unfortunately, that he was taken from us on March 28th. This man was many things. Mr. Nature to some, because if you knew his background, he was one of the largest, well known as the Nature Man, I should get that correctly, because he had one of the largest nurseries in the southeast. Then when I became a successful realtor, I served with him, and it was a pleasure. Boza asked if we just take a moment to recognize him. I just thought, you may know him, Council, Fair, the audience, this is a great guy. Just a moment, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Would you please, Council, I think a lot of these folks are here from the item, the Council of Business A. It's possible that we might be able to move that up so that these folks can have a meeting to talk with Council and then be able to set the statement to the end of our council meeting. This is how the Council, the Council of Business A, number two, A1, under, under new business. Council New Business at A.
Under 11 and 8.
That's right.
Are you making that in the form of motion, Mr. Santos? Mr. Santos has made a motion to amend the... Mr. Santos has made a motion to amend the agenda to move item number 11 and A up, whether or not in the, in the meeting, since you have any people here to speak on that? Do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
And we have a second, all in favor, aye, and the ice carry. Yes, please. I have a motion to approve the amended agenda and a second, all in favor, aye, and we'll move forward. First thing on the new agenda now is item 111A, discussion pertaining to potential parking garage at the intersection of Coleman Boulevard and Mill Street. Mr. Santos?
Madam Mayor, I believe there's some folks lined up for speaking, pass the table to the first.
And we have a new speaker?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Jenny Owens.
I will remind everyone, you have two minutes, I know there are some presentations, we will keep order, we will keep two minutes, we will let you have your presentation time, please state your name and address for the record, and if someone has already addressed your issue, we would respect, you would respect if it's already been spoken, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Page, your members, Jill Owens, living at 1197, I'm a live-on resident in Mount Pleasant. The item here is sent to submit a petition to request along with about 100 other people who asked you to rescind or repeal an earlier ruling of the previous council last October granting the development of a 55-foot parking garage on the corner of Coleman Boulevard and Mill Street. Now, Wanda residents who signed this petition believe that public funds should be used for the public interest and better spend on services which would benefit every citizen instead of funding this private enterprise. With the recent, recent fee increases of potential customer budget may help for the percolating fund. Visualize for a moment Mulchfield School with this particular site, beautiful building, great school, wrong location. Same holds true for a 55-foot parking garage, it's a great idea, modern-looking building, I'm sure, but it's in the wrong location as part of the same part of Chim Creek. By the town's own revitalization master plan, states careful considerations should be given by the town now present in order to ensure that revitalization efforts promote the public enjoyment of the creek and complement creek's natural beauty in the health of its businesses, particularly insurance money and other commercial business. As a private citizen, when I read that public statement, I'm reassured and trust that the town's adopted policies will perform what it's promised, and the area surrounding Chim Creek will be well preserved forever. Ladies and gentlemen, we have, we are in the final, and have an opportunity to give this right, to stand firm on principle and on the side of the public interest. Over 1,100 people who signed this petition can't be all wrong, any more than the nine who believed it to be at the time, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Owens, that's a good answer.
Thank you so much, the opportunity, I do have a concern. Don't we, can y'all hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address.
All right, here is the line, I read 133 Mary Street in Old Village United Plaza. I'm on the Old Village Historic District Commission, and it's disturbing me always that that parcel where the proposed parking lot may be placed, I hope it will, that's not in historic history. No matter what it is or isn't, I think would be better served for the health of the creek for a passive park to be in that area. The runoff from automobiles and careless people who drop, God knows everything, is going to be tremendous. I walked through that area from my house and marriage to the wonderful Coleman Boulevard, you couldn't believe what you see on the ground. If you've got five levels of people dumping trash, plus automobile runoff, gas, tires, oil, what about the rock here and buffalo? There's supposed to be a rock here and buffalo to support the creek from any runoff, from any end of this lake, is that in the plan? Who knows, I haven't heard anything about that. But if there is a passive park there, people who can enjoy the restaurants, the shelter, those different places, some places also they could go and be outside instead of sitting in a restaurant, it's just a lovely place to be. And as I understand it, that land where Mrs. Campus establishment used to be can be available for a parking garage, it's between the open grill and the shelter, a perfect place for parking garage. Just to put it on my tree.
Kathy Gaffos. Thank you, Ms. Gaffos Chiquitas.
Angela Brunson.
You come back to speak for her?
Yes.
And I would ask for the sake of everyone having their, their voice heard, and we hold applause at the end, I know y'all excited about what you're hearing, let's keep order, it is Council Chambers.
Thanks again, Mayor, yours, Council. Going back to my statement is that we, personally, I believe that we're brought together at times like this, to be in the right place at the right time, the right people to do the right thing. Character is built by what we stand for, reputation by the decisions we make. I'd like to ask the people in the audience to stand who oppose the location of the parking garage at Chim Creek. You humble me by being here, I appreciate your support. And I'm asking you to consider, Town Council, consider them in stopping the development of parking garages in the form of Chim Creek, for one reason and one reason only, it's not in the public interest to pursue. I would like that you entertain a motion to pull and or remove the public funding from this project. Thank you for your time and your attention to this very important issue.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jones.
Angela Brunson.
Angela Brunson, 847, Toller Drive, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. I come from a long line of shrimping history, there's shrimp boat named after me even. Chim Creek is treasured for her historic and pristine beauty. Chim Creek welcomes her people, visitors, tourists. One thing that we do not know, how this five-story garage is going to affect the business community, 20% of the signatures of our 1,100-plus on the petition are people that love the creek and live out of state. So during the travel times, will there be a reduction of visitors to shop, to dine, to lodge here in Mount Pleasant? Simply because Chim Creek has been violated? Is that to say there will be a 20% loss reduction of revenue from people who stay away because Mount Pleasant has lost her charm? Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a number of speakers, I'm going to be calling speakers two at a time, the first one comes to the podium, the second speaker will stand next to three or four feet behind. Ann Owens in Tech Small.
Jenny Jen Owens, I live at 1419 Diamond Boulevard. As you can tell, this is a family affair. We are trying to protect the town we have known and loved for a very long time, going back to our grandparents. But enough of that sentimental claptrap. I know it means very little to you, otherwise this monstrous cotton footprint with its ill-conceived variances and public funding wouldn't have been considered. What I do want to talk about is the financial bottom line you are facing. The parking lot that exists on Coleman Boulevard has been acting as a filter for the pollutants from the cars and natural debris in the area, much like the bookend lot on the other side of Chim Creek. It is an unpaved, open space that allows rain and the occasional but always anticipated flooding to dilute gasoline, motor oil, and heavy metals. This is also true for animal waste from birds and mammals. These accumulations on the service lot and the nearby heavily traveled road become diluted substances as they percolate into the sandy soil. In turn, the water table is recharged naturally. Runoff after rainstorm such as the one we experienced last night and referred to as a first flush effect can have devastating consequences upon a water body without the open land vegetated barriers to absorb waste and chemicals. Paving and or reducing this open space means that more of these pollutants will flow directly into Chim Creek and surrounding wetlands, in many cases causing water quality impairment whether or not storm drains are installed. That often leads to an increase in water temperature, harming aquatic wildlife, including the dolphins, crabs, shrimp, and fish that spawn and live in the marshes. Lack of a food source will also impact the crab bank, which many bird species use as a nesting site. As for humans trying to enjoy a meal at one of the restaurants along Chim Creek with a view of toxic mix, mix of heavy metals and red tides caused by growth of algae bloom that soon use up most of the water's oxygen.
Thank you, Ms. Owens, I have two minutes.
No tourist or your neighbor or my family wants to come see a place devoid of aquatic or alien wildlife and stinking to high heaven. Imagine if you were ordering a seafood dinner while dead fish float by.
Thank you.
Want to say more, if you will see on deck, please?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, I leave this text, Small, I live at 2306 Coleman Boulevard, Mount Pleasant, I am therefore an hour pound developer. I'm part of the development team that has this property under contract control, and let me tell you, shocking surprise today. I'll sign your petition, I don't want it either, but the people who put misinformation out, who don't take the time to come to the people who've spent the money, the energy, effort, bring an investment here, and they show this, they have an agenda, they have a personal agenda. Now let me show you what we have planned, what we have talked about. This is an office building, it's not a parking garage, does that surprise anybody here? It's a parking garage that supports an office building. Yes, it has more parking spaces in it, because there are times of the week, times of the year, times of the day, that parking is needed at Chim Creek to support Chim Creek. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you who have honest concerns about what is going on down there, I offer the opportunity to sit down and debate with you. For those people who put out the misinformation and got people riled up and said it over and over and got petition against this, you're wrong, you're going about it the wrong way, it's not right, let's have a civil discourse. Thank you.
Ashley Green.
Mayor, Council, my name is Helen Stunmore, I live at 1600 Lockwood Boulevard, Unit 1748 in Seaside Park. I'm a native of this area, and I moved to Mount Pleasant in 1995. I would like to speak as I am an urban planner from a different perspective, and I have my heart in Mount Pleasant. I remember eating in the crawler as a child. The history of that lot speaks volumes when I drive by it. Today, I was driving down Coleman, as I was coming to the meeting, and I was doing my own mental land use survey, and it's beautiful what is going on on Coleman, but there's this small part in my heart, in my brain that says, "This is not a good fit for this location." What I would like to suggest to Council is to maybe open your minds to some other solutions to the parking problems, as we have all over this country, problems with parking garages and parking lots tearing up all the open spaces. The lot itself is not esoteric to the area, much less the history, and when I looked at the design of the building, I thought it was a beautiful looking garage and possible professional office space, but what I see is something that maybe 20 years down the road, everyone's going to drive by and go, "Darn." First impressions are lasting impressions. And when people come into Mount Pleasant, as they did last weekend, and we saw 40,000 people line up, does that really tell you that's Mount Pleasant, or is that just in your mind as we see in downtown Charleston, nothing against downtown Charleston, but we've seen parking garages go in that were of, you know, if you go back and look at the old historic photos, there were buildings that were torn down.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Teresa Smith.
My name's Ashley Woody, I live at Winter and Bren Street, and I'll try and keep them close. I don't think that any taxpayer money should be given to this project. If they would like to build an office building, I think they need to do it on their own dime, and I think they need to adhere to all of the codes and regulations regarding the size and scale and mass of building in that location. Thanks.
Cheryl Gregory, Vernon Owens.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Gregory, I live at number 45 on Simmons Street. I'm going to try and do it faster, because everybody's pretty much, you know we love this creek, we grew up on it, our grandparents loved it, so I'm going to go to maybe an alternative to consider, and I know you love Mount Pleasant, you will cancel, and I know you work hard, you spend countless hours without pay or thank yous, and I know we can put our heads together. What about something like downtown Charleston Visitor Center? They have a visitor center, and they have shops, they have a route that takes you to all the highlight and places. I think this could, if we built a garage, the revenue could pay for the shops. It could keep people parked in areas, we won't have routing cars everywhere, something that comes up is the Kmart shopping center, it's huge. Maybe we could turn that into a beautiful visitor center with shuttle buses, some going to Town Center, some going down Coleman, some going to Fisher's Point, which is a wonderful place, perhaps a shuttle could be. We could incorporate that with the border taxis, that people can come from Charleston over, we'll pick them up, we'll take them to Coleman, to all the great restaurants, so that's just my thought, and I appreciate y'all considering it, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory.
Lynn Cowan.
I'm Mayor Page, Council, and fellow townspeople. I'm Vernon Owens, I live at 1419 Diamond Boulevard. Can everybody hear me in the back, back there? Okay. An English poet, John Keats, wrote, "Beauty is truth, truth to beauty, that is all you know on earth and all you need to know." I want to thank the courageous 1,100-plus townspeople who were willing to put their name out there on the petition to preserve the beauty of Chim Creek. Chim Creek is the beautiful face of our town, and the Low Country, and possibly the entire East Coast.
Sullivan's Island has, we know, beautiful beaches. Downtown Charleston has the architecture and 400 years of history. Mount Pleasant has Shem Creek, because that is the cultural heart of our community, just like the beaches off of Sullivan's and the history for downtown. Previous councils and you guys spent $8 million taxpayer money to support it. It was truly an asset. You walk out on that park, you have a wonderful view of Shem Creek. Do you want people, when they walk out there, to look across and see a towering great facade? Maybe a beautiful office building, I don't doubt that, but it looks like it's cut and paste from Charlotte or Atlanta. If we need more commercial, grade A commercial office space, we can put it down on Ridge South Boulevard, remodelize that. The question is, if you look here and you come into Mount Pleasant, you still feel the impact of the park, and then to spoil you on the other side by having it there? That's going to be, that project has the potential to completely transform that future. And if you like it, that has the potential to make a legacy, I think, of this council. It's going to be a project that everyone will live with as it comes out of the ground in the years to come. And I would ask you, is that really something that you guys remember and want to look back on and say, we were on council, that was the project who, I think, people here tonight and there, there's a lot of opposition to that. I would urge you, listen to what people are saying, and read the statement.
Members of Council, I'm Bill Farf, on 17th Fifth Street. I already anticipated speaking on this at the end of the night. However, you know, there's a couple things that are paralleled here that was paralleled in the 1215, 1336 I had on view for the Coleman Boulevard related district. Is that, you know, the common theme is that, you know, you've got 1,100 people petitioning for you right now. You've got over 1,000 people for the Coleman Boulevard related and the Earl's Court thing. Councilman Garci made a comment probably three months ago, only 4,000 people have run out for the last election. And you're looking at 25% of the electors who are signing petitions, and 1,100 people is going to be that much more. You combine those, that's about 2,000 people. That's half of the, half of the electors. You know, I think the people have put it properly here, that, you know, you've got a situation, one of the things I'm reading is, the town is facing maybe a $14 million shortfall, athletic shortfall, over the next few years. The city, they're entering into a joint venture with a private developer. Sorry, I checked your last name, but whatever, yeah, I do have a agenda also. I agree with what they're saying, because if any large structure that is a bookend in that location is not appropriate for Shem Creek, you know, you can imagine, imagine a structure that large was where the current Shem Creek park today right now, where they all hope to be used today. Why not bookend Shem Creek with two low-level natural estuaries, so to speak? You know, yeah, whether it is a parking garage or an office building, and that footprint is not appropriate. And you had, you know, I've been surprised at the number of people that have come up here, visiting people that have talked tonight against this issue than have talked over the last 10 or 15, versus against the changes, the change in the overall vision.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkman.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Christine Moncol, and I'm on Coney Drive. It really upsets me that they're spending public money on this facility. What I see is that you're not helping the neighborhoods that are surrounding Coleman Boulevard. You're developing Coleman Boulevard, but you're not doing any mitigation of the damage that you're doing to our property. And here, you're going to spend public money on this facility, and we're really not happy about that. When all of these cars flood out of this parking garage and come down my street, I'm going to be thinking about every single one of you.
Thank you all for coming. This was a discussion item tonight. I believe, Mr. Santos, you wanted to hold your comments till the end?
Yes, I did. Mayor, Madam Mayor, Council, I was not on council and a lot of discussions took place, so I had to go back and do some research myself. I think one of the problems that I've seen is that, I know our planning department does an excellent job of getting information out there. We have some very intelligent, very smart folks in planning. And I know that the town, and our team in particular, does an excellent job posting things on our internet and getting the word out about things that are going on. I know that. One of the problems that I saw, or I see that's happened, is we have, we had a notice that went out, meeting notice for a special meeting of development, to 10,000, 10,000 people. It's why I text relative to development proposal of Coleman Boulevard at the intersection of Coleman Boulevard and the street. Now, if you guys have been on council, would you understand that this was about changing? You would like this to allow parking garage with the five-foot parking garage? Of course you would. So nobody knew what was going on, and you could come down there, because this was technically correct. I'm not calling validity here. I'm letting, no text, you know what was going on, that you were trying to drive. And so, on their behalf, how are they supposed to know, you know? So, those are the kind of things I think we need to do a better job of, when we put these things out there, we explain it a little bit better, because certainly, I didn't expect them to know it, and certainly they probably didn't, and that's why you didn't have people come and how we're dealing with the issue at the time. This is a good reading from, from the, from the committee about preserving the character of Shem Creek. I'll read through it, but I encourage all the councilors to get a copy of that. Postle Carr did a great article. There you were correcting, you're saying Shem Creek was iconic. I agree 100%. This was a great article right here as well. One of the problems that I'm having as well is tonight, you're getting ready to talk about millage, and you're going to be taxing our citizens, paying $185,000 for 15 years, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, for this garage. Now, let's say that again. We're going to be spending $185,000 a year, thereabouts, to notice some stipulations. But now, we're going to raise taxes on our citizens because we need to upgrade our towns and our systems and some other things. To me, that's a hard pill to swallow. It's a hard pill to swallow, and I think it's a hard pill for the citizens to swallow as well, to go into a relationship with a private developer. And I have to say, the text, in all the meetings we've had, I've never heard anybody speak bad about you. I never have. So I want to make sure that's very clear. Nobody's, nobody that I have talked to has targeted you or said anything mean about you. Oh, complaining, but great development out here, you've done well. And so, I've never heard anybody, so I'm sorry that you feel that way, but that I haven't heard that. They've talked about the parking garage of Shem Creek, these people, these folks are passionate about it. This is Mount Pleasant's, if you look at that ATAX funds, the ATAX ministers just came out, Aaron Lawson talked about it. Number one question he gets is, where's Shem Creek? People want to come to Shem Creek, really want to come there because of the beauty of Shem Creek, the ambiance of Shem Creek. If you drop the parking garage there, a lot of that ambiance is gone. And people were here to try and protect it. I was born and raised in Shem Creek, learned how to fish in Shem Creek, given a lot of you have. A lot of you people are, love Shem Creek just as much as I have, and they just don't want to see it destroyed or altered such that the ambiance is not there. I think there's other places along Shem Creek. I heard, um, on lady C, the Ole Miss's Capres area is available. I know in the Coleman Boulevard overlay district plan, they talk about a garage from Shem Creek down to Chameleah. I think there's some areas there that can be looked at, and certainly, I heard Mr. Small say he would sign the petition. I thought that was great. I'm sure Jim has a copy for you. But what, but what I'm saying is, if you're willing, if you're willing to sign the petition, and I know that's, I'm just kind of joking with you, I know you probably just tongue-in-cheeked that, but.
Yeah, when I was, the people that signed the petition, I would have signed it too. That was bad information.
Okay. Um, you know, personally, I have a problem as to this. I agree with the lady about putting public funds toward private and stuff like that. I just do, especially now we're getting ready to raise taxes, not only once, but a couple times. That, that just doesn't sit, sit well with me. Another issue I have is, yes, during the summertime, we do have functions there that bring a lot of people, but during the winter, it's dead down there. And so, what's going to happen with that big garage sitting there, where it's only being used by the people who are going to those offices, and maybe some of the people who are parking? But there's other parking spaces up. There's other parking spaces up.
My name is Scott, five this is Royal Avenue. Madam Mayor, I'm Mr. Tom Cawthorne, thank you. Mount Pleasant is sandwiched between Sullivan's Island and downtown Charleston. Sullivan's Island has, we know, beautiful beaches, downtown Charleston has the architecture and 400 years of history. Mount Pleasant has Shen Creek, that is the cultural heart of our community, just like the beaches off of Sullivan's and the history for downtown. Previous councils and you guys spent eight million dollars in tax pair line for a park at Shen Creek. It was truly an asset. You walk out on that park, you have a wonderful little Shen Creek. Do you want people when they walk out there to look across and see a towering great facade? Maybe a beautiful office building, I don't doubt that, but it looks like it's cut and paste from Charlotte or Atlanta. If we need more commercial, grade A commercial office space, we can put it down on Ridge South Bowl or Remodelize that. The question is, if you come in and out, do you still feel the demand for it? Then to explore view on the other side by having them there? That's gonna be, that project has the potential to completely transform their future. If you like, that has the potential to make a legacy, I think, of this council. It's gonna be a project that everyone will live with as it comes out of the ground in the years to come. And I would ask you, is that really something that you guys remember wanting to look back on and say that we were on council? That was the project who, I think people here tonight and there, there's a lot of opposition to that. I would urge you, listen to what people are saying, if you read the sit down.
Madam's Councilman Bill Parf, my favorite seventeen fifth street. I already anticipated you speaking on this at the end of the night. However, you know, there's a couple of things that are paralleled here that was paralleled in the trailer fifteen, thirteen, because I had one viewed for the common over late district. Is that, you know, the common theme is that, you know, you've got 1,100 people petitioning for you right now. You have over a thousand people for the common over late and the Earl's Court thing. Councilman Garret made a comment probably three months ago, only 4,000 people turned out for last election. Now, you're looking at 25% of the electors who are signing petitions, this 1,100 people is gonna be that much more. You combine those, that's about two to 2,000 people, that's half of half the electorate. You know, I think the people have put it properly here, that, you know, you've got a situation, one of the ones I'm reading is, the town is facing maybe a $14 million shortfall, athletic shortfall, over the next few years. The city are entering into a joint venture with a private developer. Sorry, I didn't hear your last name, but whatever, yeah, I do have a agenda also. I agree with what they're saying, is that any large structure that is booked in, and that location is not appropriate for Shen Creek. You know, you can imagine, imagine a structure that large was where the current Shen Creek parking right now, where they're hoping to try to do this. Why not book in Shen Creek with two low levels of natural estuary, so to speak? You know, yeah, whether it is a parking garage or an office building, and that footprint is not appropriate. And you had, you know, I've been surprised at the number of people that are kind of here, visiting with people that talked tonight against this issue than have talked over the last ten or fifteen, business against the changes of, to change in the common over late.
Thank you, Mr. Parf.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Moncolas, from the Lebon Caiha Drive. It really upsets me that they're spending public money on this facility. What I see is that you're not helping the neighborhoods that are surrounding Coleman Boulevard. You're developing Coleman Boulevard, but you're not doing any mitigation of damage that you're doing to our property. And here you're gonna spend public money on this facility, and we're really not happy about that. When all of these cars flood out of this parking garage and come down my street, I'm gonna be thinking about every single one of you.
Thank you all for coming. This was a discussion item tonight. I believe, Mr. Santos, you wanted to hold your comments till the end?
Yes, I did. Mayor, um, Mayor, Madam Mayor, Councilor. I was not on council and a lot of discussions took place, so I had to go back and do some research myself. I think one of the problems that I've seen is that, I know our planning department does an excellent job of getting information out there. We have some very intelligent, very smart folks in planning. And I know that the town, and our team in particular, does an excellent job posting things on our internet and getting the word out about things that are going on. I know that. One of the problems that I saw, or I see that's happened, is we have, we had a notice that went out, meeting notice for a special meeting development, to 10,000. It's why I text relative development proposal Boulevard at the intersection of Coleman Boulevard and District. Now, if you guys have been on council, would you understand that this was about changing? You would like this state to allow a parking garage with a five-foot parking garage? Of course you would. So nobody knew what was going on, and you could come down, because this was technically correct. I'm not calling validity, I'm letting, no text, you know what was going on, that you were trying to drive. And so, on their behalf, how are they supposed to know? You know? So, those are the kind of things, I think we need to do a better job of, we put these things out there and explain it a little bit better, because certainly, I didn't expect them to know it, and certainly they probably didn't, and that's why you didn't have people come and how we're dealing with the issue at the time. This is a good reading from, from, and they're all on board with the committee about preserving the character of Shen Creek. I'll read through it, but I encourage all the councilors to get a copy of that. Postacurri did a great article, there you were correcting, you're saying Shen Creek was iconic. I agree 100%, this was a great article right here as well. One of the problems that I'm having as well is tonight, you're getting ready to talk about millage, it's gonna be taxing our citizens. Paying $185,000 for 15 years, if I'm not mistaken, for this garage. Now, let's say that again. We're gonna be spending $185,000 a year, thereabouts, most of stipulations. But now we're gonna raise taxes on our citizens because we need to upgrade our towns and our systems and some other things. To me, that's a hard pill to swallow. It's a hard pill to swallow, and I think it's a hard pill for the citizens to swallow as well, to go into a relationship with a private developer. And I have to say, the text, in all meetings we've had, I've never heard anybody speak bad about you. I never have. So I wanna make sure that's very clear. Nobody that I have talked to has targeted you or said anything mean about you. No complaints, but great development out here, you've done well. And so, I've never heard anybody, so I'm sorry that you feel that way, but that I haven't heard that. They've talked about the parking garage in Shen Creek, these people, these folks are passionate about it. This is Mount Pleasant, if you look at that ATAX funds, the ATAX ministers just came out, Aaron Lawson talked about it. Number one question he gets is, where's Shen Creek? People wanna come to Shen Creek? Really wanna come there because of the beauty of Shen Creek, the ambiance of Shen Creek? If you drop the parking garage there, a lot of that ambiance is gone. And people were here to try and protect it. I was born and raised in Shen Creek, learned how to fish on Shen Creek, given a lot of you have. A lot of you people love Shen Creek just as much as I do, and they just don't wanna see it destroyed or altered such that the ambiance is not there. I think there's other places along Shen Creek, I heard, on the latest, the Oluses Capres area is available. I know in the Coleman Boulevard overlay district plan, they talk about a garage from Shen Creek down to Chameleah. I think there's some areas there that can be looked at. And certainly, I heard Mr. Small say he would sign the petition. I thought that was great. I'm sure Jim has a copy for you. But what I'm saying is, if you're willing, if you're willing to sign the petition, and I know that's, I'm just kind of joking with you, I know you probably just tongue in cheek at that, but.
Yeah, when I was saying, the people that signed the petition, I would've signed it too. That was bad information.
Okay. Um, you know, personally, I have a problem as to this. I agree with the lady about putting public funds toward private and stuff like that. I just do, especially now we're getting ready to raise taxes, not only once, but a couple times. That just doesn't sit well with me. Another issue I have is, yes, during the summertime, we do have functions there that bring a lot of people. But during the winter, it's dead rather. And so, what's gonna happen with that big garage sitting there, where it's only being used by the people who are going to those offices? And maybe some of the people who are parking? But there's other parking spaces out there closer to these buildings, the building picking first before they get to the garage. So now we have a garage sitting there that's not being utilized during the winter months. And so, we have to weigh that as well. And so, those are the kind of issues that I'm looking at. I think everybody wants a garage, I think everybody wants to have a place where our visitors and our guests, I like to call them guests, because that's what they are when they come to our town, are guests. Have a place to park and save place to park. I just don't think it's on Shen Creek. I think it's somewhere else along Coleman Boulevard, and I'd like, certainly like for an opportunity to look at some more of those areas before we start, you know, building on Shen Creek. And like I said, I'm, you know, I'm ready to make a motion. See if the text, are you, are you willing to hold off on the garage till we can take a good look at the rest of Coleman Boulevard, to see whether or not we see any other places that might be suitable for that?
I'm willing to discuss with people who more would have a civil discussion about the issues surrounding that.
So are you saying right now, you will freeze any efforts to build until we can sit down and talk about that? Because I'll be happy to call that meeting.
You've already called the meeting, that's why we're here tonight.
No, sir, this is a council meeting, I just carried on the agenda.
You called, how can you call the person who's on those?
Excuse me, Board and Council Chairman, please. This is a matter for discussion. For the information of the public that's come here today, we hear you loud and clear. When that was Darby Vote Works, the buildings could've been 150 foot tall in 1950 and 1960. 150 foot tall, because it was a vote building site. And regardless of how we got to where we are today, when I ran for mayor, I suggested we have an engaged group of citizens, and we do. I'm not gonna sit here in council chambers and exchange words between councilmen and developers. I'm willing to have meeting to come together and hear the appropriate information, not misinformation, correct information about an opportunity to build a Class A office building that will offer citizens opportunities to work, at jobs, that will pay wages, that they can live here, and go to our wonderful schools, and enjoy our facilities. Is that the right location? Do we believe this to be a public-private, proper, public-private enterprise? I supported it, and I supported it for many reasons. I did not vote for the urban corridor. But the urban corridor is here, folks, we're 25 years plus in it. I'm supporting it now because I wanna be wise as we go forward. I thank you all for coming, this is a discussion item. I do not have a motion on the table, we will, we will see if we get that. This, we cannot take action on this tonight because there has been no public notice. We cannot take a motion, we cannot move forward to rescind any votes that have been made, because we've not given public notice that that is our intent. So, at this point, I appreciate your input, I will open it up for discussion to any of my other councilmen. We do have other business to do. Is there anyone here on council that would like to make any, add anything to the discussion here about the information that we've heard from our very concerned and caring citizens?
I have one question, Mr. DeMora, for you. We've heard a lot tonight about public money, tax money, being huge in this and matching for private entity. Can you tell everybody here, the Alt Mountain, what that revenue source is, where that money comes from, and how it can legally use?
Yes, sir. The money comes from tourists. It is known as accommodations tax money, and it's allowed for by state law, and only can be spent in certain places. And it can't be spent on water lines and new roads and things like that. It can't be spent on something like this.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
That's all right, Mr. Parf.
If I could, just, Alan, for Mr. Garret, ask this question, and ask Mr. DeMora, if it's been brought up, and it's $185,000 annually, and that we're putting in for 15 years, could he just clarify what that would be, Mr. DeMora? So, for everyone's indication.
Can everyone hear?
No.
Okay, okay.
Y'all can't hear me?
Okay. Would you please repeat your question?
What I ask, folks, I apologize, I just came, I wanted to be quiet. What I ask is the town administrator identify, it's been messaged by five or six people, and I really don't want to name them, you come up and stoke because I am listening. And I'm, and one of the themes that came through was this $185,000 that the town put in for a 15-year window, and that $2-plus million. So, can you just clarify what exactly, why we're doing that, and what the difference is if we go to our own garage, et cetera, and the cost differentials, and what's the developer, and why we came together? So just, it helps everyone understand where that is.
Well, sir, a parking garage of this magnitude could cost somewhere in the 6, 7 million dollar range. This, the details of this agreement, and the town contributing $185,000 accommodations tax money for 15 years. So it'll cover, I'm estimating, it'll cover less than half the cost of parking garage. The town is not responsible for its construction, it's not responsible for its maintenance. What is in return, it is at peak times, almost 270 parking spaces. Roughly half of those parking spaces are used by those in the office building during normal working hours, Monday through Friday, you know, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. type stuff. So, the town gets the benefit of all the spaces, half the spaces after normal working hours, and then all the spaces throughout the weekend. So, the town also has one more provision of the agreement, and that is that any net revenues produced by the parking garage go towards reducing the $185,000 contribution by the town.
Okay, so my understanding is that this is an office building that was proposed to the town that included a mandatory 144 spaces. And then, with the town's infusion, would increase by 120 spaces on top of that. That's the only difference. So that's, that office building and its parking would be just for that entity if the town wasn't involved. Those still be there at the same height.
That's right. And theoretically, what you're saying is 144 spaces will be built anyway, whether there was public access to it or not.
Listen, I'm trying to understand. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, I just wanna, you know, I heard, I heard our administrator talk about ATAX funds. ATAX funds, they're over there as heads and beds funds, heads and beds, and they're there to promote tourism, to try to get people to come here, stay here, in our hotels, in our restaurants and things, and I can't see a parking garage attracting tourists to come here. I'm a little confused with that, so just have to straighten me up. Listen, would you let me stand up and address them, since you're talking about this constantly? I hope you have two minutes up here to tell us your thoughts.
Order, please. I want to.
So, that's my question is, common is just tax. From what I know, out of my years on council, we're supposed to be heads and beds money. We're supposed to be bringing tourists here to stay in our hotels, to promote our restaurants, so they'll, you know, shop here and things like that, and I don't see this parking garage doing it. So I, I don't feel like those funds should be going toward a parking garage, I think they should be going to what you're intending, and that is bringing things like the Medal of Honor football game and things like that, that are gonna bring people here to spend night in our hotels, they're gonna bring people here to spend money in restaurants and things, and not parking garage. And I'll be honest with you, I'm, you know, I'd like to make a motion that we rescind that $185,000 going toward a, pretty much a private, because I just don't think that we should be spending that kind of money on parking lots, I think it should be spent in other ways as it was intended.
Mr. DeMora.
No, excuse me, yes, Mr. DeMora.
Legal counsel. Two things. One, I thought the mayor advised us, but I'd like to hear from legal, about whether a motion to rescind is appropriate in light of the notice provisions that the mayor spoke about earlier. And then, secondly, I appreciate the robust discussion, but aren't we supposed to have a motion before really discussion, like this taking place ensues? Otherwise, we're just having a discussion. Usually, there is a motion, or against something, if there is a discussion, you put it up and down. And then, a question, but if there's a motion, that's my question. First, we have a discussion during this issue. Legal has looked at the issue, proper notice, and you believe it's improper to hear such motions. I do believe a proper motion would be a motion to rescind, and in that case, I'm not sure that the motion is to rescind, it wasn't clarified in a motion, because there's a number of things. So I don't believe the motion is clear, and it fails on its face because we don't know if it's being rescinded. With that said, it would have to be by two-thirds. If it were proper, it would have to be by two-thirds majority of council. Who can make a motion to rescind? Anyone can make a motion to rescind. No matter how they voted previously? They voted, they didn't have to vote previously, and this was done by prior council, Mr. Nichols, sir.
I'll be happy to restate it for you.
Thank you.
So would it be appropriate for me to restate? Since, I mean, I said we sent $185,000, is it appropriate toward this? I can restate it, that's what I, that's what I said.
Right, sir, I'm just not sure what, well, for example, as part of all this, there was ordinance of the, with the planning, there's also a license agreement which deals with the parking spaces, so I'm just, so there would be clarification as to exactly where you're moving to rescind.
I'm sending, I'm sending, asking for rescind $185,000 that was approved to go toward the, the building, this building and the rental of those parking spaces.
The 180, I'm just trying to clarify, $185,000 was not going towards the building of the building, it's not a license agreement for the parking spaces.
Okay, thank you, that, I'll include that in the motion, thank you.
And that was $185,000, it was.
Were they not on the answer? Were they agreeing? Were they agreeing?
We have a motion? There is no second, the motion bids. Thank you very much for coming, we're gonna move on back to the correct order of the agenda.
What quick, what quick sentence?
Yes?
Up there on the mayor's, talking about community engagement, and I'm there supporting my good friend Jim. You heard me speak about not people voting, because this is important, you know, take this away. There are 57,000 registered voters in the town of Mount Pleasant. That's a fact, it's not my opinion. In November, 11,000 people voted. That means 46,000 people stayed home, 18% voting. You got that, does you? Mr. Thet, we gotta get people engaged, you're not engaged.
Wait a minute, second. That's it, I'll let you do the facts. Folks, folks, this was a discussion item. I am bound by Roberts Rule's order to conduct this meeting properly. I hear you loud and clear. We will continue discussion and continue engagement. I cannot change this ordinance at this time, there has been no proper notice. I thank you all very much for coming out and making your voices heard. Item number eight on the agenda is planning, Ms. Carroll. You have the agenda, we had amended it earlier, we are now on item eight, A, under new business. And these are our first readings of the Weaver Circle properties, Ms. Carroll.
Yes, actually, the next three items are all related to the Weaver Circle request. This would be the annexation, the comprehensive plan amendment request, as well as the zoning request for residential townhomes. We did receive correspondence today from the developer, he's requesting a control of all three of these items for at least up to 60 days, maybe perhaps a way to come back quicker if possible, would like control for at least 60 days, so he can continue that along with some of the residential.
Second. So we have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Listening to the two ladies that spoke earlier tonight, and I'm not sure if the lady that owns the property is clear, I don't believe there is access to that property, all the property that, or access will be allowed.
There is access. I'm a lady right here.
Thank you very much for calling. We had, Mr. Parf, we had actually discussed that, and I do believe that was one of the developer's questions, he was going to go back and talk about a potential access point. So I think that's still in discussion.
Okay, okay. I draw one I vote every day, I look at, and I remember they went into a skate building. It's 1535. They work it out, they work it out, I just want to add.
And Mr. Morrison has also reviewed that and this one, so there's, yeah, there's not.
Okay, so we have.
Is there no access?
At this point, that's right. The discussion of planning, is it the renewal, actually, was that perhaps there should have been further consideration of access in general in that area to include access to these properties?
Thank you, Mr. DeMora.
Was that, was that removed, or is that being deferred?
Yeah, the motion was to defer up to 60 days, as I understood it, is that correct? Your motion? So, it was deferred up to 60 days, and we do have a second, we've had some discussion. Another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that was item number one, two, and three. We have another, first reading, item number four, it's a rezoning on Lansing Drive.
Yes, this request is to rezone from area one business to area one business two, this is the 900 Lansing Drive, as you may be familiar, it's a car repair business. The business owner would like to expand, looking to add additional service day, so it does require a rezoning to 82. And if that is approved, and a special exception approved from the board of building fields will also be required before that can stand.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
First reading, orders number 14032, we want us to rezone from AV, area one business district to AV2. Area one business two district, two parcel land comprising approximately 28 acres, located at 900 Lansing Drive.
Moving on to all business, final reading on the Harry Robinson property at Six Mile Road.
Yes, this is deferred, as your previous two town council meetings, this is your request to annex, 13 parcels of land, including 600 and Harry Robinson.
Final reading, one and two, second.
So we have a motion to approve items one and two, and a second, and any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Item two, you recall that first topic, I wanna make sure in your motion, we're including with this development, that it will have the understood eight-foot wide, like a head ring, all right, ring through, it runs this piece of ground. That was a condition placed on a piece of partial land, it was brought to us the first time.
I mean, I, if you're more comfortable with the guards and council, I'll, and then my person to here, and that is.
And the second?
The second's coming.
Okay, thank you. I do have two people signed up to speak on this issue.
Louis Jefferson.
He had to leave.
George Freeman.
Good evening.
A key organization in the municipal community, that's what the aldermen and rear aldermen group, there's just a couple of things that, requests that we have, is that if there was any wetland left, or with the, with pension fund, we would like to have that placed into a conservation easement, and there's no problem with that. The other thing is, is that there is a connection for a future connection in the future. We would like to request that that area is not placed into the homeowners association, and that has a permanent right of way listed on it, and the plaque, so that in the future, that connection can be done. Because in the past, that land has been turned over to the homeowners association, and when I stayed here, hold of it, they refused a lot of connection to the turf. So, in order to prevent that in the future, we're requesting that, you put that as a typical right of way in that part of the homeowners association. Those are the only requests that we have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll.
Mr. Freeman.
Oh, yeah.
Those are stipulations that you just indicated, I know that some community have met with the developer, was that discussed with you?
Yes, we discussed it with him. I don't even say they had it, but wetlands, because they weren't sure what they were gonna do with that. But like I said, if there is one, that's his request, because we'd like to have the turf. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have an amended motion and amended second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Final reading, orders number 14003, $100,000, the annexation of 13 parcels of land comprising a total of approximately 13.06 acres, and private 50-foot right of, of Harry Robinson Road. private 50-foot right of the area, Robinson Road, located on Six Mile Road, the intersection of right-hand road. Final reading, orders number 14005, the order to zone 13 parcels of land, RPH, patio house residential district, the reason of two parcels of land, CC, community conservation district, SBOB, sweep grass basket overlay district, RPH, patio house residential district for development to be built at Six Mile South Avenue.
Thank you. Item number three on the agenda is final reading on property on Chuck Dela Gober.
Yes, this is a reminder of the freeze for the annexation of 1135 Chuck Dela Gober.
Ten, go second. I understand, I just need a second.
I made my first, your approval on three and a half.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion to approve items three and four and a second. Is there discussion on these items? All in favor?
Aye.
Final reading, orders number 14017, the orders providing the annexation of approximately 0.632 acres of parcel land located at 1135 Chuck Dela Gober and identified by TMS number Final reading, orders number 14018, the orders to zone AB, area one business district and UCOB, urban corridor overlay district, comprising 0.632 acres of parcel land located at 1135 Chuck Dela Gober, identified by TMS number 532080009.
Item number five.
Items number five and six are both the annexation and then zoning request for a portion of the property located in 75 Drive. Council received a request, I believe it was taken before yesterday, or yesterday or on, and requesting to defer the annexation, zoning of this particular item.
Missionary that, Joe?
Second.
Five and six.
Yes, five and six.
Thank you. I have several motions and several seconds. Was there a recommended time?
There was not a requested time, period of time.
May we, we propose to come back within 60 days.
Within 60 days. Would you amend your motion?
I will amend my motion for it to accept for up to 60 days, about five and six.
Okay. I have an amended motion and a second to defer this for up to 60 days. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number seven, final reading on Hamlin Road property.
Yes, this particular annexation was rescinding an annexation of a disputed area of the property and then annexing again that same position as well as additional property. This property is located at 1318 Hampton Road.
Property, second.
We have a motion, a second. Discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Final reading, orders number 14021, the orders to amend orders number 08067, rescinding the annexation of disputed area property and request to annex approximately 18 acres of parcel land, orders 4 block 12 and 1318 Hampton Road, identified by TMS number 57800003, which includes the reference disputed area property.
Thank you. Item number eight is the final reading on the amendments to the Mount Pleasant Code ordinance pertaining to urban corridor overlay.
Yes, this did have first reading at the March town council meeting. These were first reading of amendments that had been reviewed and recommended for approval by both the planning commission as well as the planning committee. The first reading, there was discussion regarding two things. The number of required parking spaces for multifamily and also further discussion on one-way public streets. Council had first reading, but slid back to the planning committee for further discussion regarding those two particular items. With respect to multifamily parking, the planning committee has recommended an amendment that rather than requiring two spaces per unit for the multifamily units, then instead there should be a range, one and a half to two spaces per unit. With respect to one-way streets, there were, there was discussion regarding standards for one-way streets. There was a motion made to limit one-way street to maximum 12 units allowed unless otherwise approved by the designer review board. This motion failed by a two-two vote. And therefore, that particular aspect is coming forward to you with no recommendations for any further amendments from the committee. We tried to answer any questions, but the, the only thing that was recommended for location at this point in time was the number of required spaces for multifamily.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. In regards to one-way streets, how many projects are underway currently on the boulevard? Or have been, or are working on approximately, how many projects?
Just for residential where this would, one-way streets would, obviously, the public street only applies when you've got some sort of residential development where you're going to need subdivision. There are four that have either been approved, some level of approval.
How many of them have asked for one-way streets? All of them. So perhaps one-way streets are problematic from a planning department point of view? I mean, if, if all of them want one-way streets, we're concerned about fire trucks and access and public access and.
Well, I'll, I'll speak to it from the perspective of, it should, whether it's a one-way street or a two-way street, obviously, there are certain dimensional requirements that we would be looking for, especially on the one-way street in order to accommodate a fire truck and make sure the tanks are safe. And so the, actually, what's in the ordinance currently, because one-way streets are in the current provision, that was the recommendation that came to you from your planning commission. The dimensions that are in there are those that were reviewed by our town engineer and also discussed with our prior department, the 22-foot right-of-way that's in the current proposed text.
But it didn't come with a recommendation. That's in the original ordinance. So regardless of how we amended tonight, that will, if the one-way streets are allowed, it'll go to that 22-foot.
That's right. What's in, what is had first reading includes one-way streets with those dimensional requirements. 22-foot includes the sidewalk, including the curb.
But no limitation, so it doesn't matter if it's a six-unit residential development or 100-unit residential development.
That's correct. With the current draft.
Okay, thank you. Do we hear a motion? No speakers then? Yeah, I mean, but we have a motion, just.
Do we take these, these two items and basically, and then what you can do is one that can't take in any history?
Well, this is, the way I understand this tonight, this final reading is for everything that we have discussed. We ask them to go back and review parking as it pertain to multifamily and one-way streets. So the amendment would be for, the motion must come first before you make any other amendments. So we would need a motion and a second before we can move on with amendments individually. Am I correct, Ms. Freeman?
Yes, correct, Ms. Freeman. It would be a motion, you would approve or deny. The ordinance has passed that first reading and then you could move to handle a motion for some, all, no amendments. You can handle them at a time, you can handle them all together, whatever.
So let's, just, if you give me a little bit of deny and then come back and read, you know, I vote, I'm rather than to approve this because it's a second, it's a second reading, you'll make it?
No, sir, we won't vote on second reading. After the, after the second is made and there's discussion, then there can be motions to amend if that's the council's question. So you won't approve a second amendment, excuse me, second reading. You'll be approving it for discussion and you can handle any amendments.
I understand, I understand. Then I'll have to make a motion to approve the ordinance as, as you, as you read.
Sir.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the final reading as originally stated as in a whole, correct? Mr. Freeman?
That's correct. As was approved at that first reading.
So I might go ahead and make a motion and, I'm sorry.
No, we have a motion, a second. And now we can have discussion. And I have, Mr. Wilson has asked for recognition of her discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Last month, I asked the town attorney, and we included it in our, in our first reading, whether there was any repercussions of altering our urban corridor overlay district from, because we accepted block grants from the county or federal funds. And the conversation that I have, we pulled every month to be assigned to the town, although I physically haven't seen them, but I asked our town attorney, a man of honor, and has gone through them. And my understanding is that the reductions that are proposed right now do not affect that. However, I would caution that properties that we did come up with, and this is another subject, but properties that, that individuals own, and I'll use the boulevard as an example, if they were to have secured federal dollars, that property has a mandated 20% workforce housing that is to remain in perpetuity. And if we approve that, then we allow that usage to be locked in place for the life of that property regardless of success. So that may be something that we take down to committee in the future and discuss whether we don't have a line, line item in there that identifies one federal dollar being used as a precaution. And then one last thing, Madam Mayor, if I can. There was a point brought up with this on vesting, whether individuals have already placed in the process. And so just clarification that I didn't know, that vesting is a legal term, so this grandfather clause really wouldn't apply if they are here and are vested or they're not vested based on the laws that you have established. So if they've already submitted plans and are certain amount in the process, that is a predetermined. So those that have already vested for projects along the common boulevard are in. That dilutes it and confuses it as much as we can.
Okay, Ken, let's take that in two parts. First, I'd like to ask Ms. Carroll, Ms. Carroll, when you view workforce housing in a project, it is not for perpetual, it doesn't go forever with the property, is that correct?
It's ten years.
It's 10 years. So for that instance, regardless of their federal dollars invested, that is our ordinance.
Yeah, and that's going to, my understanding is that.
It's our local ordinance. It's ten years.
And I think we're getting outside around what we're covering here with, but my understanding is that if we, the developer takes federal dollars, that, that, that lines the hands of the local. Our ordinance is superseded. Which is fine if you choose to put that property in place with workforce housing. But that 10-year rule is our law, so this is, and I think this is a point for committee instead of not, it's not really applying to this final reading.
Okay. I think our town attorney has identified that there are no projects that we have, there are no grants that the town has taken from any county or federal source that would make this problematic.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, so let's just clarify that.
So I apologize for diluting.
No, 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 that's fine. I'm just trying to clarify.
So I appreciate the effort of the town attorney and to clarify that we're safe if we want to make these changes.
Absolutely. Any other discussion?
On motion? On the federal. I, I do.
Yes, sir.
All right, first of all, a lot of meetings, a lot of great information, a lot of passion. And I commend the citizens, this council, Professor Nichols responding, of course, and lots, and sometimes drives on tours. Last month, I'm crazy for wrong, Madam Mayor, people, council, we had the first reading as to parking for multifamily units, where we set the number at two. Is that? Well, I don't know.
No, that's, that's not absolutely correct. And I, I want to list the help of the town attorney here.
The town council made the first reading. Then I thought it went to committee and there was another robust debate there and unanimous vote of the committee to change that to 1.522 to dash two for multifamily within the district. And I like it at the amendment, I think that's required at this time that attaches to the original motion made, I think it was to Santos. And I'm sure that's where he was going eventually anyway. And so I, I'd like to move to amend for the purposes of including the 1.522 space range that was. You get around.
Was this, was this actually the motion that came from the committee?
Yes, I see. Yes, Mr. Carroll?
And the only problem we had with the one-way streets was the, councilman Smith and I didn't like the minimum of number of units attached to that. So that's the only problem we had and that's resulted in the 22 tie on that motion.
Yes, we, we are discussing the amendment, not the recommendation, not the one-way street. So, okay. Amendment for parking.
Yes, committee.
I was there. I'm calling those spaces, is that correct?
Okay. For clarification, if we can. Clarification, Ms. Stokes Marshall, what is your question?
My question is, the motion is to amend to the recommendation that came out of the planning committee, which is for 1.522 parking space.
Yes, just a little more motion, my second is.
Okay.
Call the question.
All right. We'll call the vote. We do have speakers, we'll hear them first. So we'll line them up if there's more than one.
Yes, ma'am. James Scott, Jeff Kirk.
James, I don't have to remind you. I think you know the drill now very well.
James Scott, I just want to let you know, today is my birthday.
Happy birthday.
We're about to get that question. And.
Our station is too busy, so.
I, I would much rather, you know, not that I don't love spending 100,000, Madam Mayor and Town Council, but I would much rather be at home with my wife and children. Yeah, I'm out here tonight speaking and I just want to say that if you guys go ahead and pass this for my birthday and I won't come back anytime in the near future. We've, this has been a long, hard six months. I certainly appreciate the, the effort that you guys, the town staff, and as well as all the citizens who've turned out. And I would just like to say, as I said, time to go and please pass this.
Great, Taylor. Jeff Kirk, 817 Pitt Street. Scott Cottrell, the last, we were talking about earlier, you know, the common thing we've had is, we have a lot of the electors who put you guys in office are, we're sitting here fighting the people who are the developers. Most of them don't even live in the town. You know, they'll come up and they'll tell you, I live in, do it for you, I live west as, or whatever. And I think I'll pass you guys, continue to refocus as to, do you want? You're working for the 1100 people that talked for the petition you tonight, 1,000 people that signed the petition for the common overlay amendments and all this. And let's don't forget, you know, why you're here and who you're actually serving. And it seems like that, you know, there's just way too much going on that catering to outside interests. It seems that way. Unfortunately, there's a lot of the people who, the electors that put you guys in office kind of feel like that maybe y'all are not as harmonious as you should be among yourselves. You've seen a little hint of this tonight, you know, all this. But, you know, let's just keep, keep in mind, I mean, we have been identified as a very small group, I think the name was District Eubanks, I don't know what it was, he, he represents. But Ms. Garth, whether it's 4,000 or 11,000 or whatever it is, I go back 4,000, I know the number kind of stuck with me, I apologize.
No, it's all right. We all need to know.
But the issue is, is just like President Obama said, elections have consequences. Actions in office have consequences also. Mr. Eubanks says, and other people trying to petition us as a small self-serving group of people. In 18 months, when there's another election, you're going to see exactly how small or how large that is.
Jimmy, Jimmy, back over.
Bill Eubanks? Let Bill speak first. Good evening, I'm Ray Taylor, 648 Pelsor Drive. I do live here. Not only do I live here, but I work here. Not only do I live here and work here, but I own and pay taxes on commercial property on Bill Street and at 652 Common Boulevard. I take a different position than the last speaker. You don't represent 1100 people that signed petition, you represent 73,000 people who reside in this town. That's a lot. That's a lot of people. I've yet to hear from a person tonight who lives more than Chuck Dolan. As the mayor mentioned, Coleman Boulevard's revitalization has been in progress for 25 years now. About 10 years ago, it really got kicked off. At the end of that, we came out with a key concept, which was a vision that showed us that not all the town's 73,000 residents want to or can afford to live in a three-bedroom and two-better house with a fenced yard and garage. Part of what Coleman Boulevard's revitalization is, is to provide a place for those people to live. A key concept of that is that you could actually live in an urban area. Once that was adopted by the town, the business community bought into that. Setting aside the sale of Boulevard, there have been tens of millions of private dollars invested in the state of Coleman Boulevard based on our confidence in the town. We looked at what the town did, it wasn't perfect, but we bought into it. We bought into it with our pocketbooks. We bought into the idea that people really could live, shop, entertain themselves, walk back and forth, do all the things that we see happening in the urban community right there on Coleman Boulevard. I apologize for not being here last month. I should have been here. I put a client's project in front of mine, but I'm here tonight for myself. As a business owner, as a commercial property owner, please understand the changes, as in octoists as they sound, are very specific. They are designed to prevent any future high-density residential growth within the overlay district. They will make it virtually impossible for a developer to build a residential project within the overlay district. It will not be economically...
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, that's your two minutes.
Robert Spencer.
Good evening, Billie Banks. My home address is 398 Avenue in Charleston. I do live in West Ashland. I have worked in Mount Pleasant for over 22 years. My bosses both have lived in Mount Pleasant for over 30 years, and trust me, I don't say anything up here without their blessing. This has been a very contentious issue, and it's been a very divisive issue. I've been misrepresented in some of the things that I've said tonight. But in a spirit of coming together and being a community, James and Carmen Scott and I got together for coffee a couple of weeks ago. And through that conversation, we pledged to find a way to come together and have a common voice. And after that, we met at Jimmy Bagwell's office, Brett Bennett, James Scott, Jimmy, Dr. Edwards and Ms. Edwards were there, and Tommy Uti was there, and I was there, there were seven of us. And we left that meeting with a compromise that we felt like would move Mount Pleasant forward. I didn't get everything I wanted out of it, they didn't get everything they want. It was compromised, but through the good of the community. And I can't in my two minutes go over the five points that we had in our compromise, but I have a copy here, that'll give you a mayor page. But I very respectfully request that this council amend the motion to include all five of these modifications, and you pass it unanimously, and we move forward with Mount Pleasant.
Thank you, Bill.
Jimmy, you want to speak, sir?
Yeah. I'm Rob Spencer, 506 Old Bridge Court. I'm a captain. I started businesses without the credit card, hired hundreds of people all across the country, sold it to public companies. I like to make money, and I worked hard at it. And so people work so hard, so I became a developer. Three barriers to entry to be a developer. Your daddy had to do it, got out of bad money, well, political connections. I always suggest doing it, it's like falling out of a boat. You're down here in low country, you can't help but make money. And so then I hear you talking about, you know, parking, one-way streets, and I'm like, I gotta see what's going on. And this beautiful white-haired lady comes up, her name's Ann Edwards, and I'm like, Ann Edwards? I'm on her street, you know, street is probably... And then her husband's governor, James B. Edwards, there's a school named after him, there's a dental school named after him. And he's given, they've given their lives for service to make Mount Pleasant better, and South Carolina better. And they are about excellence, and they see the potential we have for excellence. They see how this could be in Sausalito, Charleston, San Francisco, not Fort Lauderdale. And so please, let's go for excellence, let's honor these people I can believe we talk about. Once they say something, I feel like it's you go to vote. Thank you.
I'm Jimmy Bag, 207 Williams Street. Bill, what Bill said is true, we met, we knew that we weren't carrying any authority or power, but we felt like we could come up with some conclusions that might sound up reasonably. And I would urge you to take a look at those five points that we discussed and we have redefined. I think that they will go a long way toward getting us back to a commonsensical approach to what's happened on Coleman Boulevard. We don't have one right now. This parking garage, the density that we've seen, is not what the people of this town want. I urge town council to look at it, to adopt most of it if you can. I know to some people, 12 units per acre doesn't sound like much, but to me, it's a great compromise, and it's still a lot of units per acre. I think to have 20 to 22 units per acre is outrageous. I think the town council needs to take a hard look at the density that it creates on Coleman Boulevard. We again are going to ruin this beautiful town if we don't stop and take a hard look at what we're trying to do. I urge you to take a look at those agreements that we came up with and pass it if you can.
Earl Tiki.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm Hamlin O'Kelly, I wrote a letter to you yesterday. I represent Earl's Court LLC, and it's our contention that you proposed changes really do affect a vested right that our client has under the South Carolina Vested Rights Act. As I wrote in my letter, our client received approval for its subdivision, its master plan, its parking plan, and you all as a local governing body fall under the Vested Rights Act. The approvals are for a site in specific plan in which you all branded, and our client does not consent to the proposed changes which affect negatively this development. Our client has been in touch with the zoning department, and the zoning planning department stated that they are not sure there is a vested right because there are approvals required in DOT. We disagree with that. That's like saying you have to have DEHEC approval for your drainage basin, your stormwater basin, but that doesn't change the fact that the rights are vested. Should the changes go through, then the town's going to be subject to a lawsuit. We're going to be spending tax dollars, which has been a big issue tonight for the town, and we'll have no choice but to bring it. This is a shame, too, because what's being developed goes right into the heart of what you all have sought to do through the draft, through the revitalization of Coleman, making it into a mean street where people can work, play, and live. So I would urge you to deny the motion, I think, fair.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
I'm Carol Tiki, I live at 208 Bennings Street. I would like to thank you for taking the time to go back and look again at some of the proposals with the idea of amending these to eliminate some of the minimal setbacks and minimal parking requirements that have been outlined before. I've heard the developers speak to the issues on Pitt Street and Commercial Block and some of these areas, and would ask you once again to consider how these have evolved over the years. The Commercial Block of Pitt Street, when laid out, had service alleyways. Now, the service alleyway has been incorporated as a flag lot with residential area. So the delivery trucks, the visitors, customers have to block streetways to get there. There's no parking, parking is at a premium. And the idea of emulating this with developments going forward just doesn't make sense. These were laid out for horses, they had service alleyways. Going forward, it's problematic that we don't, there's safety issues. Basically, I would just say, don't let the developers develop away the reasons everybody wants to be here in the first place. Thank you, Ms. Tiki.
My team, 208 Bennings Street. I agree with my bride, Withers, comments, but I would also say with Earl's Court, the setback, I urge you to approve the amendments because the setback in Earl's Court with the house literally right here to the sidewalk, one, is not appealing, but furthermore, it's not safe. And I just don't think it's safe for folks to be that close to the street, it's certainly not appealing if that allows, if we don't pass that, we allow that type of access that close to the sidewalk throughout the town, I think it takes away from the buffer, it's beautiful, it doesn't have to be big by the amount, but the buffer and the green space, the logs, et cetera, that are trees, that you can have. Even the Boulevard has a little more space than that house in Earl's Court, which is what I'm... So I urge you to approve of this, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tiki. And that's all I have. Mr. Grab, if you'd like to speak, you have two minutes.
Vince Graham, office at 414 Woburn Street, and involved in developing Earl's Court. I wouldn't have said anything, as you all heard from me, but I was somewhat inspired, actually, by speakers early in the meeting. Eric Demora read a proclamation, part of which recognized the importance of individual freedom in a just society. And then my friend, Yossi Revson, spoke about how important civilization and liberty are to society. Yossi reminded us to remember to pay tribute to the spirit of freedom and justice. I would submit that neighbors have been subjected to a sophisticated misinformation campaign. And perhaps even worse, just as in 1930s Germany, in which an educated citizen reached succumb on propaganda...
Order, please, even if it's...
So too have many people in the old village. Meanwhile, a visionary plan for the redevelopment of Coleman, which was enthusiastically adopted by town council and eloquently advanced by its staff, has been undermined for the sake of political expedience. If I'm being in the spirit of speaking truth with power, I want to call out what I feel is a hypocrisy of those so-called conservative Republicans who seem to believe property rights are okay for themselves, but not for others. Mount Pleasant deserves better, and I ask for your review.
Thank you, Mr. Tren. That's all we have, signed up to speak. We have a motion and a second, and we have amendment.
Motion to amend. The motion to amend is for...
Can't hear you. Can you speak loud? Can't hear you.
The motion to amend is to adopt the recommendation that came from the planning committee, which is to adopt 1.5 to two spaces for multifamily units.
We have a motion and a second with the amendment, and we'll call for a vote. Please, would you roll call?
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mr. Carey votes yes. Mr. Garge?
Aye.
Mr. Garge votes yes. Mr. Glass?
Aye.
Mr. Glass votes yes. Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols votes yes. Mr. O'Neill?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill votes yes. Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Santos votes yes. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Smith votes yes. Ms. Dokes Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Dokes Marshall votes yes. Mayor Cage?
Aye.
Mayor Cage votes yes.
And motion carries. Who's the amendment? We can finalize the whole thing. Okay. So if there are no motions for further amendments, then the whole motion is approved. In whole, is that... We'll need a vote, we'll need a motion to vote.
The motions are made.
So we can have discussion?
Right, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Garge?
There's this, there's this motion that we're getting a vote on, conclude the discussion that came from the planning committee, the two-to-two tie on the 12 units on one-way street.
No amendment.
No, no amendment has been made to address that.
Okay, based on that, if I may, Mr. Carey or Mr. O'Neill, I believe you two voted against this.
Smith. I voted for it, and Ms. Dokes Marshall voted for it.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Kestrel, and Carey. You voted against it because it was, you felt it was limiting, or you didn't want to place a number? I will have the planning committee, I'm just trying.
That's correct.
Do you have a suggestion where we can maybe amend it, or?
I don't think there needs to be a vote there.
Okay. That's correct. So would you be interested in making the motion to amend that I, or I'm asking?
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith?
It's my understanding, Christian, that unless there's a motion to put this in there, then this would remain... The one-way streets are already in the amendment. So I don't see any reason to make such frivolous, unnecessary motions. I would say we can move to a vote.
I didn't think frivolous, I was just wanting to know what you said.
Other discussion, Mr. Santos?
Yeah, I mean, I'll make a motion that we, to eliminate the number of 12 units created along One Way Street, 12 units as... In our... The words.
The record publication, that's a motion to amend.
Yes, sir. I'll say it.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend, the main motion, and the second that would limit one-way streets to residential developments that have 12 units or less. Is that correct?
What a clarification. My understanding was that one-way street can only serve 12 units. It didn't limit the size of development, as if the road, you couldn't have a one-way street that served more than 12 units.
This was a proposal that was brought forth by the tree banks, Mr. Scott, and the group that it's from earlier. So I'm speaking on what I read, and what they proposed, that it would be, any one-way street would be limited to 12 units unless otherwise approved by the designer review board. That was, that's my understanding of what is in the draft that they have shared with me.
And for clarification, Mr. Santos, is that what you reflected in your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
And we have a second, and you're clear on your second.
Yes.
So we have a motion, a second for the amendment, any discussion? Call for vote.
Mr. Carey?
No.
Mr. Garge?
No.
Mr. Glass?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Dokes Marshall? Mayor Cage?
For clarification, before I make this vote. And yes vote for me will prove limiting the units to 12 for service, service of 12 units on residential buildings in narrow corridor overlay districts with one-way streets allowed.
I interpret this to mean...
Okay.
That there can only be 12 units on a one-way street, period, unless otherwise approved by the design review board.
Yes.
So I would rather not say you can't, but just say that the design review board approves it, you can have it.
I believe I need a little more clarification.
Madam Mayor, if I may...
Yes.
The question I asked at committee was if potentially we had a development that say had 24 units, it was in the overlay district, 12 units could be served by one road, then you could have a right turn onto another one-way road that could also serve 12 units. You could accomplish 24 units within the same development because 12 units were only serviced by a one-way road. Is that correct?
That's a matter of for interpretation, but I suppose...
If the parcel, Madam Mayor...
Yes, certainly, Mr. Smith.
If the parcel of property allowed for a T intersection, well, what if that property didn't allow that T intersection? Then we're putting the decision on the architectural, excuse me, the design review board, is why I can't support this motion.
I understand that. Can I have some clarification about the design review board?
Yes.
And one-way streets, is there a standard that they are subject to?
There... Well, I guess I'll offer a couple of comments, I'll go back first to the design review board. review board. The designer review board's role is to review commercial projects. So what we're talking about here is the subdivision of property for single-family homes, so a little bit out of their purview of what they normally would look at, so that we know the planning commission would typically look at, the subdivision of properties they have to, through sketch plans, certain preliminary plans. We, when this question came regarding one-way streets, back to the Planning Committee, just as we reviewed parking requirements throughout the southeast to see what other multifamily developments do, we also tried to see if there were any specific standards about the length of a road for one-way streets, and over blocking units on one-way streets, and so on, and we couldn't find any. So we don't, we as a staff don't have a recommendation regarding that, the under-recommendation that we would have regarding one-way street, this what is already in here with respect to the standards, how the roads must be built, what the width should be.
Twenty-two for the curvy betters.
I think beyond that, any sort of limit on the number of units is a policy decision.
So I'm confused again, I apologize, and a long night, just want to make sure we do this correctly. So if it's not under the purview of the D R B to do this, so how will this look? Will it go to Planning Commission instead, because that's not what we have in front of us?
If you approve it as the motion was made, it will go to the designer review board, and then it will ultimately have to go to the Planning Commission, because Planning Commission still has to look at a sketch plan and a preliminary plan, but it would have to go to the designer review board first, so that a running review board could say, yes, you could have more than twelve units on a one-way street, or no, you can't. And then they would make their submittal to the Planning Commission for the sketch plan, the subdivision of properties.
Okay, so the opportunity for a developer is that this council has made an amendment to an ordinance to limit one-way streets that would service no more than twelve units.
That's right.
But they could decide to override that based on the property division with designer review board, as the motion's been made. Yes, sir, Mr. Garge?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chris Carroll, do we have D R B that gets involved in residential housing anywhere else in what we do?
The only occasion where that might occur is a large apartment complex, for example, those have gone through designer review.
I would ask this body to seriously consider, I understand, one-way street's going to be built right, believe me, it's got to meet requirements, police file, all those things, it'll be cut. And you can talk about numbers, and that really gets us into, in my opinion, dangerous territory, the numbers, but to attack D R B, I've had another layer, this is simply a direction I would strongly recommend this body not, not add. For the word.
Yes, sir.
I believe that we were in a roll call vote.
We were.
Four to four, and now we're into it now, like, as Chad said earlier, we can have discussion about any time, but can we have it right before the last person is supposed to vote?
Sure can.
Hang on, I'm asking Google, I think it was a...
It's Council's...
I'm sorry?
It's Council's...
So I could have had a one-on-one discussion, you're right, I'm not sure about that.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols, I'm just asking my questions for clarification. It's an important issue to me, because I hundred percent agree about the premise of one-way streets, and our, what we're trying to achieve here is response to concerns by residents. My challenge as the mayor is, is there a standard set already in my process that allows this to happen? And that's my concern. If this is not something that regularly the designer review board will have to do, I have to be very cautious as I move forward, and not that I don't want to take away layer protection, I'm not afraid to shun a lie on anything that this staff does, or this council, and I love that there are people here who are shining lights in, that's not why I ask, I'm concerned about process. Could you have one point, Mr. Santos, I'm very prepared to make my quick...
I just have one question.
Okay.
What I understand, this motion that's on the floor, is if it goes to the D R B, this is out of their normal scope of what they know, is that correct?
That, that's correct, I mean, this is, this is talking about the street standards, and it is in the section that is talking about subdivision of property for single-family homes, which is something that's normally, that we're doing about the Planning Commission, so, you know, perhaps the better body is the Planning Commission, if theirs to be initial.
So for clarification for legal, regardless of how I vote, can we amend it again to take out a designer review, and instead, perhaps clean this up and send it to the proper body?
Complete the list, any further amendments?
Okay, for point of clarification, for that point of order, I will vote no on this vote. Thank you. And certainly we'll look for an amendment from my fine counsel to address how we should properly do this.
Madam Mayor, I have a question, that we consider a committee to leave more than requirements for it to go to D R B.
We have a motion.
Because I understand amendments to leave one-way streets to twelve units as described prior, or this move accepted, motion that required D R B.
I want to say take.
Taking that down for a fast.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second for discussion, any discussion?
Yes, discussion. Under that scenario, if the developer wanted to see one of those streets, let's say it was sixteen units, they would be able to go through the process of going before the Planning Commission and seeking an amendment through the Planning Committee, and then the proper body, is that with the vision of motion, this is unfounded, or is it just boom? The authority has fallen and...
No, would go, from what I understand, for clarification, that it would go to the proper body to discuss that issue.
I'll offer what I think the intent is here, I think that the intent is here, that if there are more than twelve units, that there should be some sort of special consideration. I think that was what this is trying to accomplish. And so if that is what this is trying to accomplish, as I said previously, I do think that probably the more proper border commission would be the Planning Commission, because we are talking about the subdivision of property, and this is something they do all the time through their sketch plan and preliminary plan. But to take this a step further, if there is, if this is deemed to be something special, that it should receive special consideration, then probably what the tax amendment should do further is give the Planning Commission something to hang a hat on for it, it's like, you're not going to have twelve units on a one-way street if you don't accomplish this, there should be some conditions, some considerations, if, because otherwise, it's just going to be Planning Commission for approval, if there's more than twelve units. If there's a concern with that, then there should be reasons, and interconnectivity, saving a tree, good subdivision design, or things like that should be, things that Planning Commission would have to weigh and consider if a development is, is going to have more than twelve on a street.
So can we look at addressing the conditions on which we place when we have a developer that is asking for more than twelve units and goes to the Planning Commission?
I think that's, yes, ma'am, I think that's...
Send it back to the Planning Committee, let them hash it out, come back to us.
No, well, we have no, I have no discussion, we, we have a motion and a second. To, we have a second, yes, we have a motion, a second, to amend the requirement for twelve, for one-way streets that would service twelve units to not go to the designer review board, but instead go through a process where there are already some standards, and perhaps more need to be added at some point for review. So we go to Planning Commission, then to committee, then to full council, which would offer citizens three opportunities for input, three chances to voice their opinion and have a say in it. Mr. Smith?
Madam Mayor, as a strong advocate for private property rights, may I just bluntly say, you guys are killing me. So we're going to approve something to approve more regulations and constraints, and more bureaucracy and layers of government for developers, and in my own humble opinion, it's atrocious.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, I appreciate your comment. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Carrier? Mr. Carrier votes no. Mr. Garge?
Aye.
Mr. Garge votes yes. Mr. Glass?
No.
Mr. Glass votes no. Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols votes yes. Mr. O'Neil?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neil votes yes. Mr. Santos?
No.
Mr. Santos votes no. Mr. Smith? I'm sorry?
Aye.
Mr. Smith votes no. Ms. Stokes Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Stokes Marshall votes yes. Mayor Page? Yes. Mayor Page votes yes. Ms. Karen's talking. Yes, now, we need a full motion for the whole, we have discussed one-way streets, we have discussed the parking, and now we need a motion to approve, we have it, we already have it, we need a vote on the motion.
It doesn't need to, we don't need to have a motion to encompass, encompasses the units, you've already voted.
There it is. Okay, so for clarification, we have the original final reading for the full motion and second. Would you prefer a call to vote, or is this discussion?
Clarification.
Clarification, Mr. Pat, would you prefer to clarify that for me, please?
If you would amplify about the five amendments that you changed, include those five, those changes.
At first reading, comments were, comments were part of first reading, I believe is what you're referring to, or?
Those were in the ordinance that was presented to our council. The recommendations that came from the Planning Committee last year, those were in your ordinance at first reading, such as the specifying the width and depth of the parking spaces, the nine A, and those sort of things, those were included in our first reading.
So we're, this encompasses all of that, amendments to the original nine, and the five we made the changes to?
That's right, Planning Commission had recommended nine changes, you did all did not include, the Planning Committee did not include all of those, so what was in the ordinance at first reading were only those recommendations that had been recommended by the Planning Committee.
Would you call for the vote? Madam Hallerman, please. Mr. Carrier?
Aye.
Mr. Carrier votes yes. Mr. Garge?
Aye.
Mr. Garge votes yes. Mr. Glass?
Aye.
Mr. Glass votes yes. Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols votes yes. Mr. O'Neil?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neil votes yes. Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Santos votes yes. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips votes yes. Ms. Stokes Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Stokes Marshall votes yes. Mayor Page? Yes.
Final reading, ordinance number 14022, ordinance to amend sections 156.007 and 156.39, we have the 456 of nonpleasant businesses pertaining to definitions, U C O D urban corridor overlay district.
Number nine, final reading, one more question first, when is your birthday, Mr. Carroll?
February.
Perhaps, perhaps next year.
February.
Perhaps next year, number nine.
Final reading, number nine.
We have someone signed up to speak on this issue, send its point, number nine.
Dave Shem, Madam Mayor of the Council, appreciate your time this evening, my name is Dave Shem, I live at 1551 Ben Sorey Boulevard, Sinnes Point. Quick summary, Sinnes Point, as a developed community, was intentionally not included in the overlay district, but a small portion of our property along Ben Sorey Boulevard was added. The request before you is to return our entire community to our original H D N zoning. We appreciate your support during the first reading, and trust that you'll continue to be right by your friends and neighbors at Sinnes Point, and through the second reading. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Just a question, that is the amendment you part, right? Is what your amendment is?
Thank you, we have motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes or nays?
Final reading, ordinance number 14023, ordinance to remove approximately 2.10 acre portion of five-point subdivision of U C O D urban corridor overlay district.
I have number 10, I'm reading.
This is an amendment to the Pepper Track Plan Development.
Final reading, second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the side? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes and a nays?
Reading, ordinance number 14024, ordinance providing for urban areas of Pepper Track D B C heat plant development conservation design district ordinance, ordinance number 14048, as amended, our resoning two areas of area.
Thank you, moving on to committee reports, Combinations Tax Advisory Committee.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, to report on the committee review, proposed fiscal year 2014 15th Combinations Tax Budget, and our amendment for approval to the blessed committee of council. Aaron Lawson of the Charleston Area Convention Visitor Bureau presented to us a review of their 2014 marketing plans, visitor center numbers were a little slower in March due to the Easter holiday, we believe, and spring break, home later this year, as well as the seasonally called weather. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, annexation.
Madam Mayor, this is our report on the annexation committee, recommend approval of a pre-parcelled land located on the Deepwater Circle that appeared earlier in our agenda under Planning and Prosecutes.
Bits and purchases?
We know meeting.
Economic Development Committee?
Madam Mayor, we did meet, and we heard from members and members from the Nonpleasant Business Professionals Association, represented by the advocacy committee, and created, it was created to keep the membership of residents local and state issues. The association also reminded the committee of their monthly meetings occurring Thursday of each month, holiday aid, the base of the bridge, and in addition to other networking opportunities that are available for Nonpleasant Business Professionals Association members and council members.
Thank you for that, Finance Committee?
Madam Mayor, we did not meet, but we'll be very busy this month.
I'm sure, first budget meeting coming up on April 23rd, look forward to seeing you all there. Fire Committee?
Madam Mayor, we did not meet as well, and so we have to go report.
Human Resources?
Human Resources, do you know?
Patriots Point Development Authority did meet, we are working on an issue with a conservation easement held by D N R, those properties will go out for bid soon, the town has certainly got an interest there, because there is a requirement to move road from the Lava Water Museum, if money is raised, we will meet again this month, I'll keep you up to date. Planning Committee, Ms. Stokes Marshall?
Ms. Smith, I would welcome, I have two items to report on. We received a presentation from the, Michelle Matthews, the executive director, also behind the bidding loan fund, she did a presentation for the committee, this map provided information on the mission of the organization, which is to support nearly development of private and sustainable communities, like providing loans, technical assistance, and advocacy for affordable housing, helping bring detail, community facilities, and community businesses. Second item to report on, staff's update of the zoning boost table and the comprehensive plan update, staff provided an update on both of these projects, which are moving forward and are estimated to come before the committee this summer, the committee will begin receiving monthly updates on both projects, and that is my report.
Thank you for all... Thank you for all your hard work from that committee, Mr. Stokes Marshall. Um, Eric, please. Legal and judicial, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, uh, two items that were approved by committee for council's consideration this evening. First is giving staff approval to spend seized asset funds for the purpose of acquiring additional tenants. You approve?
Everybody must love those dogs. I have a very quick motion and a very quick second, several times. Any special?
More questions?
Yes. Everybody likes those dogs. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed?
And secondly, uh, we're seeking authorization to request from the public transportation ownership of what's commonly known as the overflow.
Check.
Uh, thank you. We have motion and a second. I thank Mr. Santos for bringing this to the committee. We are trying to make that part whole and, um, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Can the ayes have it? That's all we have. Public services, please?
Public services did not meet. That said, uh, forty thousand plus people enjoyed an incredible bridge run experience into a large park. That was due to our public services department of the police, fire, and all the others. But I want to give a shout out to Mr. Peel and the public services men and women. They did an incredible job. They fell back by 2 P M. And you wouldn't have even known there was a race. It was unbelievable. Thank you.
Not a bad part. He shared our hat. Recreation committee, Karen?
Uh, I'll piggyback on what Mr. Nichols said, Mayor and council. Um, Ashley and her girls, Nicole and Tracy, unbelievable multitasking jobs. Hats off to them too. Uh, we had a great weekend in recreation because we had to get plenty of consultants in. Uh, they spent the whole week with us and, uh, we got some good input from, from the public fund that, as well as council and staff. So we were tickled with it. We have not got their report yet. Our early indications are we're just a great participation, great information. We're going to get some good stuff out of this to go forward with our cost recovery study. Uh, we also approved four facility requests at committee. Uh, and then we got, got the numbers on our programs. You can look at those in the, on website. Thank you very much.
Transportation committee? Uh, did not meet. We need to get Mr. Morrison to work for soon. We can start building some roads, getting busy with some projects. Waterworks commission, Mr. Smith?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Waterworks and water supply together. Water supply committee, um, no action required. Report only. Meeting agenda included a presentation of the not pleasant waterworks, proposed fiscal year 2015 operating budget, proposed changes to the cost recovery policy. We appreciated Chairman Rick Crosby and John Byrd being there at that meeting. Waterworks report, the not pleasant waterwork budget continues to be a great topic, important discussion at the meetings over the past month. Commission has received updates from staff consultants on revenue requirements, funding needs. The commission's been providing staff with different scenarios related to the rates and the rate structure for them to review. Had a very successful two-day retreat. Uh, there was a public hearing. There will be a public hearing on Monday, April 21st to present the changes to the cost recovery policy and see public comments.
Thank you.
Conclusions of our report. And I would just finalize that by saying that one day it was over San Jose State, nineteen to nothing.
Thank you for that. Go Warriors. Um, the administrator's report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items, a few announcements. As you know, the farmers market opened today. And I also wanted to announce, uh, to the public about the public workshop that we're hosting on the fifteenth of this month, 5/7/30 here in County Chambers. Uh, we're asking the public to weigh in on the new park here near Town Hall. Um, you already mentioned the two of the bridge runs. Finally, blessing of the fleet as we hold it to twenty-seven.
Thank you for, for that, Eric. Uh, moving on to, uh, new business, we moved that item up earlier in the agenda. So be under old business. We have final reading for an ordinance to levy tax village for fiscal year July 1st, 2014.
Please for a second.
I have a, a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We want to call that for clarification, please.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier votes yes. Mr. Garge?
Aye.
Mr. Garge votes yes. Mr. Lasson?
No.
Mr. Lasson votes no. Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols votes yes. Mr. O'Neil?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neil votes yes. Mr. Santos?
No.
Mr. Santos votes no. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Smith votes no. Mr. Stokes Marshall? Mr. Stokes Marshall votes yes. Mayor Page?
Yes.
Mayor Page votes yes. Motion carries.
Final reading, ordinance number 14027, the ordinance to levy tax village for the town of Mount Pleasant fiscal year July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2015.
Um, item number two, final reading on the ordinance to increase planning fees for the town of Mount Pleasant.
Sexually.
Motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier votes yes. Mr. Garge?
No.
Mr. Garge votes no. Mr. Lasson?
No.
Mr. Lasson votes, votes no. Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols votes yes. Mr. O'Neil?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neil votes yes. Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Santos votes yes. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Smith votes no. Mr. Stokes Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Stokes Marshall votes yes. Mayor Page?
Yes.
Mayor Page votes yes. Motion carries.
Final reading, ordinance number 14028, the order, ordinance to increase planning fees for the town of Mount Pleasant fiscal year July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2015.
Item number three, uh, final reading for an ordinance to amend paragraph C and D of this, uh, section regarding the Mount Pleasant code of ordinances regarding, pertaining to public electric heat schedules.
Please for a second.
A motion and a second. I apologize, Ms. Christine, but I believe we should call for a vote.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier votes yes. Mr. Garge?
Aye.
Mr. Garge votes yes. Mr. Lasson?
No.
Mr. Lasson votes no. Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols votes yes. Mr. O'Neil?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neil votes yes. Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Santos votes yes. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Smith votes no. Mr. Stokes Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Stokes Marshall votes yes. Mayor Page?
Yes.
Mayor Page votes yes. Motion carries.
Final reading, ordinance number 14025, ordinance to amend paragraph C and D of section 150.002, chapter 15, Mount Pleasant code of ordinances pertaining to funding and electrical heat schedules for building permits.
Uh, we have item number four, the final reading, it's an ordinance authorizing the sale of, of, of the oil fire station, don't forget.
Please for a second.
Um, we have final reading. I may have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
No?
Final reading, ordinance number 14026, we have authorized sale of the town of Mount Pleasant for the 514000, no fire.
Thank you. Um, we have a need to go into excess, uh, executive session to discuss appointments, boards, and commissions.
Some news, yeah.
I have a motion and a second. Go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
We also, uh, a couple of years ago, we took action to address the rising cost of healthcare. I think I said, working in conjunction with, um, our employees, he came up with a good product and it's working. Um, excuse me. Our capital improvement, uh, definitely, um, we need to think in terms of where we need to be in the next five, 10, 15 years out. The other thing is the infrastructure. When we got a report on the cost of our infrastructure to maintain, to repair, to replace, uh, that's astronomical and at the rate of fourteen million dollars a year. Where's that money going to come from? First of all, we don't have, we are tempting by looking at the increases in the mileage, in the fees, to address how we can generate revenue into a pot to address that. So I like everyone else, you know. Nobody wants to hear about raising taxes. But the bottom line, we are charged with looking out for our citizens. And if we don't look at making the hard decisions now, it's going to be worse.